McGrath Smith.
Here.
Murphy Rambeletti here. Ocasio.
Here.
Israel Rivera. Jenny Rivera.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Ohio.
And the city council.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. All right, so there's a few items on the agenda this evening, and I'm gonna start with item number one is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city council subsidized the revenue of the sewer enterprise budget from the tax levy in fiscal year 2025 by $927,778, and the remainder funded by sewer receipts, recommended that the order be denied. I'm gonna turn it over to Counselor Devine for a quick update, but Jeffrey here reminds me that I gotta do a couple things first. I would entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that, for the purposes of this meeting, would be applicable to all motions to receive, to refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection. Is there an objection?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And just a quick reminder to everyone, we don't have a long agenda before us. I'm fully prepared that there's going to be healthy discussion this evening, which is fine. I just wanna remind everyone that, you know, of our rules, especially the decorum section, I have full faith in all of you to be able to speak one at a time, treat each other with respect, and hopefully we can move this forward. And yeah, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Counselor Devine, recommended that the order be denied.
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. We had our Finance Committee meeting, and this was brought up, and if memory serves me correctly, Mary Monahan was in, Council Jordan, you can, she was in, correct?
Yes.
And we had a discussion about this, and then we took a vote, and the vote was four to one to deny the order.
Thank you, Counselor Devine. Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, just briefly, just to give a little added color commentary, I would only add that there's this one-time shortfall in the sewer account. The question is, how do we fund it? We're gonna discuss options here this evening as we reconcile the fiscal year 25 budget so we can set the tax rate. One of the options that the committee considered was adding it to the tax levy itself. And so the four-one majority of the Finance Committee decided not to do that, but to pursue having it funded from reserves, and that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Does anyone have anything else to add for item number one? Okay, so it was recommended that the order be denied. All those in favor? Nope, I do need a roll call vote. I knew that, yep. So the, I'm gonna call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to deny and uphold the committee's
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Madam President, I just have a question.
Sure.
Can I vote to change what I had originally voted for in Finance?
Oh, yeah, you can, sure.
Just wanna make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Gibner.
Yes.
Greeney.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
McGrath Smith.
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti, yes. Ocasio.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Okay, with that, you've unanimously denied that, I guess. Item number two is filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that there be a transfer in fiscal year 2025 of $1,114,335, as follows, from general stabilization to capital stabilization.
Make a mo-
Counselor Devine.
Make a motion that we pass this, pass the first reading? I'm not sure.
So, pass the first reading. Motion's been, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Counselor Devine.
Yeah, in reviewing this, I think it's a terrific order to-
Wait, so, hold on.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Thank you, I wanna open it up for discussion. So there was a motion to pass the second reading, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Under discussion.
Yes. May I?
Yes.
I think this is a very good order. We're using interest, we're not using taxpayer money. This is interest that has been accumulated, and I think it's a good idea to have this go to capitalization, capital stabilization, so that we can take care of that sewer deficit.
Okay, under discussion, Counselor Jordan, and I will say that I believe the mayor is here for this item, but I'll open it up to questions, however you guys wanna do it. So Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, so just to open the discussion, I would say my reservation and why I would be at this point voting against this is because we have a $927,778 problem. It doesn't need a $1,114,335 solution. So what we should have before us is this proposal, which is what was discussed in committee, but a transfer for that amount. And if we wanna have other amounts for other noble things, be that whatever type of other capital thing, then there should be a separate proposal. Tonight was about taxes. Tonight should be about fixing the tax gap so that we cover the sewer thing, and then we can move forward with setting of the tax rate. The other thing I did want, and by the way, I should say, me voting to take $927,778 out of stabilization, that is a huge compromise, because I'm generally not in favor of taking reserves, but because of the unique circumstances around it, and the fact that we did not want it added to the levy, and of course, if I was the mayor, I would have a whole other arrangement, but I'm not, I'm Kevin, Counselor at Large, one of thirteen. I have to, that was to me the compromise. Somehow 200 grand got added to this, for apparently some other purposes are gonna be used, I'm sure, noble, but those should be discussed on their own merits. The second point I wanted to make is, we received back $2 million in ARPA funds that were given to the Victory Theater. I was able to confirm with the Community Development Office, those funds have not been reprogrammed yet, and there's a requirement to have those dollars programmed, for some purpose, to the U.S. Treasury by the end of this year. We don't have to spend them by the end of the year, but we do have to tell the government what we're gonna spend it on. Tonight would have been a perfect opportunity for us to use those $2 million to reduce this levy already. So I, and I'll stop there for the moment on this conversation, but there's all, I didn't say, well, no money from stabilization, only use the 2 million from ARPA. I think that is a big compromise to make this all work, 'cause I think we have largely unanimity, I think will be likely, when we actually go to the tax classification vote, due to the unique circumstances this year and the setting of the rates. So, but we do have to take this matter up. I think we should use at least some this year, tell the government, we'd like to use the 2 million for tax relief. The good news is, we only used 6.9 million of our 10 million in federal allowance for revenue recapture, and that gives us 3.1 million in capacity. Therefore, the full 2 million could legally be used towards the levy. And note that the levy that is proposed for tonight, we're currently at 63 million in fiscal year 24, the proposal, even with $927, is to go to 66.8 million. That is a 6.2% increase on the levy, that is a massive hit. I mean, average homes went up 16% this year, so people are gonna really get a real whack, and they just got 5% last year, 6.2% this year. So you're talking over $300 increase at a minimum already. So if we could use some of those ARPA funds, as we've done in past years, towards levy relief, that would be really welcome. Even maybe we use 1 million this year and 1 million next year, that might be a compromise. So I'm interested to hear the discussion, but I don't wanna use any more from reserves than we have to, that's the, that's the point, and I thank everyone in advance.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, could we suspend the necessary rules and have the mayor speak if anybody's got questions?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Mayor, there is an extra seat there if you don't wanna stand, it's a, Counselor Anderson Burgos is on Zoom.
I like to respect the boundary.
I got you.
And thank you so much, Madam President and Counselors. I just heard about this, the desire to use ARPA. That is not on the table, nor am I gonna propose anything that'll include ARPA to subsidize. We try to wean away from being dependent on ARPA money, and, you know, we just wanna continue this habit of not depending on ARPA money to balance our budget or lower the levy. The general stabilization account did incur, you know, we had a good year, $1,114,000 plus in interest, and I propose utilizing these earnings to cover the sewer deficit, as Counselor Jordan described, and to invest in essential capital projects in our capital project stabilization account, which the council will discuss at a future date. There are some needs that are coming forward, I'm probably gonna propose it around January time, the DPW in particular do need plow truck replacements, and so it's gonna cost a little over 300 grand, so that difference, the 1.1 million, 900 plus goes toward the deficit, I don't know, 200 plus will go toward the sewer, toward the capital stabilization, that'll supplement what's existing in there currently, so that we can take care of these, of these capital needs. So that was the intent of the path that I'm, that I'm proposing, and it's not, I will not have access to those funds in capital stabilization account, Counselor Jordan is absolutely correct, that will require me to come at a future meeting to bring those proposals in front of you, so that we can assess, analyze, deliberate, and come up with a determination for how we're gonna take care of those capital, of those capital needs for the DPW. And, you know, yeah, and this is certainly the third path, the first path is an ongoing debate regarding the sewer rate, the second, I'm in full agreement with the city council last year, we did subsidize the sewer deficit through taxation. This year, you know, we've been fortunate enough to not have to go down that path, I'm in full agreement. So here we have a third path that not only cures the deficit, but also gives us a little bit in our capital to invest in ourselves, and this path also looks favorable in the eyes of our bond rating agencies, you know, I think what we wanna do is, when they ask that question, did you use stabilization money to cure deficits, we can clearly let them know, we took interest and we invested in ourselves and took care of that deficit. So it's, it's about how we package it here, so that's what I'm proposing, there is no other proposal at the table, and hoping that the council can go forward with this.
Thank you. I had Counselor McGrath Smith, and then Counselor Greeney.
Thank you. I had a question around, and this is through the chair to the mayor, if you might answer, to follow up with Jordan's question around, why is it 9, why is it 1.1 million and not 927,000? I'd love to understand where the purpose is in that.
Yep, so in our general stabilization, we've earned, we have an earnings of 1.1 interest, and interest, and so what we're proposing is to move that 1.1 million into capital, so that we can, again, invest in ourselves and also cure the deficit. So following this agenda item, there is an order to move the 920,000 from capital to cure that, that sewer rate stabilization. The 1.1 million is there, I'm trying to avoid this habit of going in and out multiple times, we have one out of our general stabilization into capital, and we're using the capital stabilization for its intended purpose.
That's it? Counselor Greeney?
Counselor McGrath Smith asked my question.
Oh, look at that. Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just through the chair, Mr. Mayor. So you got two weeks left in the year, what are we gonna use the ARPA funds for?
So conversations we've been having, obviously, you know, housing continues to be a top priority throughout the Commonwealth, including in this community. There are some housing-related projects that have a financial gap that we're exploring to potentially close, so we can get some more units online, and also looking to reprogram some funds also to help with some, you know, kind of the neighborhood improvement, where people's homes, when, you know, income restricted.
NIP program?
Yeah, the NIP program, where you improve people's home conditions, whether it's the roof, septic tank, or whatever they can't afford. We're trying to, we, we wanna keep it focused on those housing-related needs that are going on in the community.
So if I may, so the full 2 million is gonna go towards basically housing, is, that's what you described, so you're saying, you're saying filling up a gap in the housing, which you don't describe any specific projects, and the neighborhood improvement program, of course, that's administered by Mike Moriarty's organization, so, and that's generally funded through, through CDBG. So, but so you're saying the whole 2 million is gonna go towards, and this is, just so the public understands, that the way it's been done in many municipalities, in fact all of them, is that the mayor of the municipality has sole discretion upon which to use the ARPA funds, and just remind us, the ARPA funds are came from the federal government. And just remind us further, the $2 million that we're speaking of was directed at Wisteria Hurst. I'm sorry, I know, at the Victory Theater.
Yeah, yeah.
At the Victory, Victory Theater, Holyoke's favorite white elephant. So it's, it sits there, it sat there for two years doing nothing, that was a decision two years ago, you put it towards the Victory Theater, and now it's come back around two years, so that Victory Theater didn't go over great, and now what you're saying is that you're gonna use all 2 million dollars for filling gaps in housing, which are undescribed, maybe you'll describe them, and for the neighborhood improvement program, that's what you're telling us?
Yeah, so the 2 million had, what's the word I'm looking for? We didn't just give them the 2 million, they had to satisfy requirements that's expected before we can, before we can even enter a contract, and so they, it was mostly a timing issue, there were a lot of things that they just couldn't meet, and so because of that timeline issue from when the funds have to be expended versus when the project's gonna be complete, we, that's when we redirected the funds, and there is a lot, there is, you know, if Alicia was here, we can talk at length about the housing needs that are going on in our community, and there's some unique opportunities to even expand our portfolio and bring on new units online that currently, that currently don't exist. And, you know, I honestly didn't think about using 2 million for the budget, but now that we're talking about it, and, you know, continuing the commitment that we've been having the last three years when we've been putting this budget together is, I know there was concern, and I shared it, a huge dependency on ARPA money to balance our budget, and so we're moving away from that, we're trying to put ARPA behind us and not use that money to plug gaps, anything in our budget, where, so we can be sustainable moving forward.
All right, thank you. Just one thing, can I just go to the chair to, maybe Tanya or the mayor knows, I'm not sure which one, when was the last time we, because we all know, I hope we all know how we have 1.1, 1.11 million dollars in interest, I assume we all know that, it's, I assume you do, and let me give you a spoiler alert, it's 'cause we never tapped it. So we've been incredibly conservative on using stabilization funds, in fact, in my 13 years, I can count on one hand the number of times we've allocated from stabilization. That's why, that's why there's 1.11 million dollars in there, so let's, I'll just keep it all in perspective, that's all I'm saying. When was the last time we, we, the city council or in the city, use, that's my last question, use stabilization, so maybe that's to the mayor or to Tanya, if they could just remind me?
Anyone?
I honestly have been here for five years, and I don't remember ever voting anything out of stabilization. I'm gonna go back and look though.
Yeah, good enough, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make two main points. One, our citizens just voted 66% to reduce a tax surcharge by 0.5%. That was a message to us relative to the burden they are feeling under the tax burden and the other ongoing expenses that they are already feeling, and I think we should pay careful attention to that. In light of that, I would also like to note that, given the information that Counselor Jordan provided of the 66, 63 million dollar levy moving to 66.8, if we reduce it by the sewer deficit, is still an increase of 4.9 million. And if I remember correctly, this increase in our budget levy is greater than the tax override would have been that our citizens defeated in a two-to-one vote. So I really think what we have here is a spending problem. The minority on this council was unable, um-
Can we all, Counselor Bacon has the floor, please? It's, we got this, guys, we got this.
Thank you. And so I think with this large of an increase, we are building on a base that is already too big, that we were unsuccessful in being able to trim it all by, in most cases, a seven to six vote on this council, and so that's why we're sitting here now faced with a really, really large tax levy increase, which will translate to really big tax bills for our taxpaying property owners. So I would really like to appeal to our mayor to use one of the 2 million to help every resident in the city that's paying property taxes, which that would do, instead of selective members with a picking and choosing of 2 million out of ARPA, and help everybody. And the other, third point that I will make, relative to rolling in other capital expenses to get to a balanced budget, is that I will not support that. I was here when we voted for the quarter of a million dollar truck that's never used, because we have no staff to run it, and so I'm not warm at all tonight to rolling money out of a two-third vote account into a seven vote account that will be spent in whatever way down the road. So for me, I'd like us to stay on point, I would like to appeal to our mayor to bring any money to the table that he can do to relieve the burden of our taxpayers, who have told us every which way they know how, that they're feeling the squeeze, and so at this point, for those reasons, I can't support item two, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Devine, unless there's others that haven't spoken yet, just wanna make sure, Counselor Devine?
Yeah, thank you, I just got a text that Channel 15 is blank.
Yes, so Scott is aware of it, Counselor Bacon also let us know, and I believe they're working on it.
Is the meeting being recorded, so it can go back?
The meeting is being recorded.
Okay.
And the live stream on the website is working, so I think it's just, yeah. Yes, thank you. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, just to continue, I think the discussion that people have had about the tax rate and taxpayers and all that, right now, I think we're on item number two only, I think when we have the other discussions, as far as setting the tax rate, that's where the information will be held, but right now, all we're doing is transferring a million one from general stabilization to capital stabilization, that's all I have on my agenda for now, and then that should cover the sewer deficit, and the remainder would be to go to DPW, and if any of you've had the opportunity to talk to Carl, in the director of the DPW, he will tell you how badly trucks and plows are needed in that department, so, again, I'm just talking about item number two, the moving from general stabilization to capital stabilization.
Okay, thank you. So I have, in the queue right now, I got Counselor McGrath Smith and Counselor Jordan, and so Mayor, if you wanted to respond to that?
Just gonna just clarify, nothing's going to the DPW, what's going to capital?
No, I know that.
Or later discussion with the council as far as what we wanna do with DPW, that's later?
Right, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I knew that's what you were saying.
Okay, so I have Counselor McGrath Smith, and then Counselor Jordan.
I hear the arguments, and I think that in a lot of ways, we're on the same page. I think that there's a lot of folks in this room who are trying to figure out, what's the compromise? And I think that the first compromise is that this body voted unanimously in order to pull money, you know, to not, you know, include that in the levy, and to instead try to figure out another way of handling that, that didn't have to happen. Everyone in this room was like, I'm coming here to bargain, I'm coming here to try to figure out how to get the middle ground here, we're making the best choice we can for the taxpayer. Then I think we diverge a little bit, so I know, I agree, there's the squeeze, everyone's feeling the squeeze of inflation, and that is government all the way down to every single citizen, and I feel that the squeeze, you know, yes, it could be a spending problem, it's certainly also an investment problem. So the options here, we could ask the mayor, we could push, right, we have no control over ARPA funding, but we could attempt through this vote to kill it, so that, you know, the mayor has to use ARPA funding, I think that's maybe the goal, maybe unstated, in order to have like a one-time reduction in the tax levy that would, for one year, give people relief, and I'm sure people would thank us for it in this room. It would be for one year. And then what? We could also, you know, put it over two years, right? We could push for, you know, the mayor, would you be willing to use 1 million over one year, and then another million over the next year? Yes, we have no control over that funding, but we could attempt to try to orchestrate that tonight. Even so, what would happen year three? We also have an investment problem in our city, I wish we had control over ARPA funding, we don't. I hope that the mayor, and I implore the mayor, to be very wise and thoughtful about what he does with that funding, because I do hope that that 2 million dollars is used wisely and for the purpose of investment, because I think we all know the squeeze is real, in our city, we have to see increased investment in our city in order to get out of the squeeze that we're in. That is the long-term fix. So I implore folks to think about the decisions they're making tonight around the way that we're trying to compromise, to move forward, I think everybody wants to see the squeeze fixed, but I think we have to be thoughtful about it for fixing it for one year or two, or trying to fix it long-term.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, Madam President, me voting for 927,000 from stabilization is a compromise. What wouldn't be a compromise if I said zero, take it all from 2 million from ARPA, I'm not saying that. What I am saying is, while we're on the road, the proverbial road to Damascus, we're here, the mayor cutely just padded this- the mayor cutely just padded this by 200 grand for capital projects to be named later. That's not what we're here for. We're here to solve the tax issue that we have. And so we should stay on target. If he has a proposal to take 200,000 from stabilization for fill-in-the-blank capital project, great, bring it in tomorrow's meeting, next week, whenever. That's great. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. We have no idea what that money will be used for. Hopefully it'll be wiser than the 285,000 non-used tree truck. Let's hope, right? But we'll see. Whatever that proposal is, it'll be weighed on its merits. Meanwhile, though, I will say, back on the topic of the ARPA and the 2 million, government is about choices. No question. One of my concerns about ARPA, which are reconfirmed here this evening, is we're the 13 people on the city council and not one of us knows where any of this money is gonna go. Perhaps up until 30 minutes ago, nobody even knew there was 2 million available. I don't know. But I can tell you this, I, still sitting here, have no idea what they have planned for this money. Oh, by the way, the decision has to be made in two weeks. So my question is, how is our government functioning when the people that are the decision-makers have no written plan for the city council about its housing projects? We should already have a letter that says it's gonna go to this, and this, and this. It's like we're making up government on the fly here. Because then, if I actually had a proposal, I could critique it. I mean, we've seen housing projects in this city go awry already. You heard our critique of the CPA spending going down. We're basically paying for the proverbial doorknob by giving money to an apartment that's cost like 600,000 an apartment. Is it gonna be another one of those kind of housing projects? Meanwhile, residents, we're concerned about housing? I think we all are. But how about the housing that the people that are senior citizens and the working class of this community to pay a 300, 400 tax increase? So, you know, that's why I was in favor of the 927 so that we, instead of a 400 dollar increase, it's a 300 dollar increase. That's still a 300 dollar increase. By the way, we're talking about numbers larger in this increase this year than were voted down in 2019 at the tax override, where the citizens spoke in unequivocal language, absolutely not. 65%. Now this year, they speak and say 66% no to a half a percent cut. And now we're talking about these kind of numbers. Even playing devil's advocate argument of not giving the money back on the taxes, can we at least use the 2 million dollars to pay the city's bills? How about we use that for capital? You wanna buy snowplows? Why don't we use 200,000 coming from ARPA to buy the snowplows? We make it sound like we've got all this money laying around. We don't. We're broke. We're close to it. And to the point, if we weren't broke, what proves my point that we're broke, is no government that isn't sufficiently solvent would be taxing its residents at this degree, where you're going up 6, 7% a year? That's unsustainable, it's unheard of. We have never had tax increases in this community like this. This government is failing its residents. And I'm not quite done, but getting there. And I will say, it's very disappointing to see these kind of increases, which makes the people in charge should be reflecting about, how is it that we've gotten to this point, that we're spending so much money that we have to have these kind of increases? We need to be preserving every nickel of this ARPA, not in giveaway programs and this other stuff. The housing is to protect the housing of the residents here. And this, come in, I would request, we defeat this 1.1, come in with a proposal for 927, we pass that and we move forward. I think that's the only reasonable solution. And all these other discussions on capital, we should discuss, should they be funded with capital stabilization? Should they be funded with general stabilization? Should they be funded with ARPA? That's a conversation for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have, I know the mayor had his hand up, and I want to give him a chance to answer some questions. And then I have Counselor Gibner and Counselor Anderson Burgos for the first time.
Yes.
Thank you. So Mayor, go ahead.
So what's in front of you, just so that folks are aware that this is the mayor's compromise, there's no other solutions at the table. If you vote this down, I'm just gonna refile this. There's no other ARPA money. We don't, we, we want to stay clear from being dependent on any of those ARPA dollars so that when it disappears, we can continue to sustain what we got. And I hear every other arguing point, there were, and we talked about this during budget time, increases with the net school spending, with transportation, with insurance. Thankfully, we've pivoted on the insurance front, so we allow it, you know, for future, allows us to, you know, control potential increases around the insurance front. That, coupled with the 8 million dollars additional we're throwing into the retirement account, I think that that's really where all of our money is being tied up on. And it's the responsible thing we do, we're on this aggressive schedule, we've been doing it for a long time, we're 81% funded, we got a lot to celebrate. But that is where a lot of our resources are currently being tied up, together with the increases of things that we are not, we just, we just can't control. The 1.1 million transfer, it's not a cute move. It's, you know, in line with what Bartley, Counselor Bartley is talking about, you know, we wanna, it's, we wanna, as minimal as possible refrain from, from transferring most of anything or too many times, or whatever the case. Right now, we got a request for a one-time transfer of earned interest that's sitting that account into the capital stabilization, that this body, this very council can talk about what they want to do in the very, in the near future, once we get past the tax rate setting, we can get into the new year. And I, again, I feel you on the argument with, you know, there's a lot of pressures happening from everywhere to say that government's being irresponsible, I think is a misguided statement. But I can tell you that going into the new calendar year, I'm certainly committed to figuring out how we can certainly bring down, bring down these costs, particularly eyeing our aggressive schedule on the retirement line item there we can talk about. But you want to talk about where our funds are being held up, there's 8 million dollars extra on top of what we need to pay into that account that taxpayers has been funding, rightfully so, you know, that we can certainly explore in the next budget. But, you know, these statements about being cute and being irresponsible and this, and it's just misguided and just certainly not true. But again, this is the compromise. I think the third path here, invests, gives us an opportunity to not just cure a deficit, but also invest in ourselves and do the responsible thing that looks good in the eyes of our rating agencies when they come in and rate us. Nothing more and nothing less.
Thank you. Can I just remind everyone, the side conversations are super distracting? Thank you. I know, they're not bad, but it's still super distracting for all of us, especially me. Okay, I have Counselor Gibner and then Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you, Madam President. So I hear all the arguments, but I also, I mean, I do, I think it's important that if we want to talk about the ARPA funds, we do it separately. ARPA funds have been being distributed by the federal government for a couple of years now. And if we wanted to talk about them, we should have been talking about them. They're not being used or administered differently than, than they have been this entire time. So to bring up the argument that we're two weeks from the new year and now we want to make a big fuss about it, I think, I think is a little late. But I understand that we should, you know, we should know what's going on. And I think requesting that the mayor give us a written statement of his intentions, I think is totally reasonable. I'm really sick of hearing about this tree truck. I mean, we couldn't have, as a city, anticipated that we'd have these kind of staffing issues. Hindsight is 2020. It's really easy to complain about things that happened in the past. And as a city, we've made a lot of mistakes in the past. I wasn't here for a lot of those mistakes, some of them I definitely was here, but, I mean, we can't look at all of our blunders and keep bringing them up like they're the worst thing that's ever happened to us. We have to get past things, we have to move forward, we have to figure it out. Regarding investments, absolutely, our city has an investment problem. I think that's the most true thing I've heard this evening. I think it's very important to emphasize that. Our investment problems aren't new either. You know, we've been kicking the can down the road for a really long time. And I understand that our taxpayers haven't seen these kind of increases before, but we haven't lived in this age before. It's a different world. Things are different. Values are changing. We have all these new issues. We have water systems issues with our sewage contract, you know? There's new expenses. This is a different planet than it was before. We have to be realistic about the world we live in, and it's not comfortable, and unfortunately, it's not cheap. If we look around at our city, we've, we're finally building a middle school, we kicked that can down the road for how long? Sewage infrastructure, I don't, we've been kicking that can down the road for a long time, too. We got sewage issues all over the city, we got pipes that burst that all of a sudden need emergency repair regularly. That's not cool. These are problems that we should have invested in a long time ago. What else? Our water infrastructure, we're finally getting on top of that, so that's great to see some new building around the reservoirs and such. Our public buildings, been kicking that can down the road for long enough, I think. Our roads, we kicked that can down the road quite a while, too, and we used ARPA funds for a lot of those projects. So traffic safety, been kicking that can down the road for a very long time. Makes it less safe for every resident here, as you all know, I feel strongly about it. And we have police funding issues, and we've been kicking the policing issues down the road for a long time, too. So when are we gonna start getting serious about fixing these problems, thinking about the long-term? Not having, I mean, I think it's okay to fuss about transferring more money than we need to, but we can't use it until we talk about it again, anyway. And the DPW is always in need. It's about to be winter. It is winter. It started snowing. They're gonna, they need their budgets to clear the streets so we can get to work, so kids can get to school. This morning, there was a two-hour delay for a dusting. Come on now, that's a problem. So now, our cities change a lot, you know? And I have to say, it's been a lot during this administration. We have grant writers all over the place that we've been hiring, we've been really trying to get our staffing up, we've been working really hard as a team. We've been working really hard as a team to figure things out. And I think we've been working together pretty well for the most part. Now, we have a chance to lower a burden, and I think we really should do it. And I don't know, I think these quality of life projects that have been going on in the last couple of years are really evident to our community members. They see it. The city's looking nicer, it's getting cleaner. You know, people really appreciate these things. It's the kind of city we want to live in. We have to pay for that. We're gonna have to figure out how to pay for that. The people who live here have to pay for that. I have to pay for that. You have to pay for that. People need to live somewhere. So if we, if we need to work on housing projects to get people off the streets or make, have more affordable housing for people to move into, these are things that we have to invest in. So I just say that to say this. Excuse me?
Guys, please, one at a time. Counselor Gibner has the floor.
That's what ARPA funds are for.
Counselor, she has given everyone the same respect that we don't need to say anything under our breath to interrupt her. We have rules that we follow. Thank you.
Excuse me?
But, but, okay, but you do-
What is up?
Listen, guys, stop, 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 stop. Everyone's out of order right now, please stop. Thank you. We don't need, if I hear anyone say anything under their breath, we don't need to talk to each other, we just, I don't want to be here forever. We're here longer than we need to be. Counselor Gibner has the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Just saying, I think there's some good compromises here and that we should think about. If we want to talk about the past and tree trucks, we need to talk about a lot more than just that. So instead of pointing to single projects over and over again that in the grand scheme of things don't really solve anything, we should work on everything else. And I think the compromise before us is a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Good evening, everyone. Counselor Gibner really hit the nail on the head. I echo every, every word she said. And how I always feel is when you're being interrupted when you're speaking, sometimes truth hurts, but I'm not gonna go down that road.
Can we stay on topic, please?
Yeah, listen, I'm on vacation right now and I'm with time with family, so please let me say what I've gotta say, okay? Because I usually hold my tongue and right now-
I'm letting you say what you want to say.
Yeah, so then let me say, please.
Please, whoa.
I, I know, listen, please.
Go ahead, Counselor, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm driving around Puerto Rico, and guess what? I asked family, like, what's that development? It's housing, because the housing insecurity here on the island is beyond. And so, you know, they look at it as housing is an investment, and that's exactly what it is. And another thing I wanted to point out is the fact that a good portion of our city elected Joshua Garcia as mayor. Elected because they believe in him. As a matter of fact, I believe in him. And when counselors belittle or say smart remarks, to belittle him is a disrespect, not just to the mayor, but the people who voted for him. I believe he is one of the strongest fiscal, responsible mayors that this city has seen. And what I'm sitting here and what I'm listening to while I'm here in Puerto Rico is the same counselors doing the same things to make it almost impossible. So we need to just vote this, for crying out loud, and not make it hard. It's not that, it's not that difficult. Let's make this transfer happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Graney, and then we're gonna just vote. Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, you know, I've been a resident of this city for many, many years, and I've been watching a Victory Theater for at least 35 years. No reason to allocate 2 million bucks to the Victory Theater. That's, that's like Counselor Bartley mentioned, a white elephant. So I'd like to move past that, for one thing. Anyways, that's what I have to say for that.
Okay, thank you. Just to let everyone know, the, it's fixed on cable.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Got it.
All right.
Thank you, Hoya Media. All right, so on the motion, the motion was to pass the second reading, and Letessa will call the rule.
Is that your new nickname?
Yeah, we're gonna, that's my new nickname.
Letessa.
If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the item number two transfer before you. If you vote no, you're not. So Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
No.
Counselor Devine?
Yes.
Counselor Gibner?
Yes.
Counselor Graney?
No.
Counselor Jordan?
No.
Counselor McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Counselor Ocasio?
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
See.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Vacan?
No.
8-5, that does not pass. So, we can't really, what do you guys want to do with item three?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, technically, can we still vote on the shift, item four?
No, we don't have a balanced budget.
Can we, can I suspend the rules just to ask Tanya?
Sure.
It's our auditors here.
Yeah, motion to suspend rules, allow the auditors speak.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tanya?
You can, you can vote the shift, but we can't balance the budget and submit the tax recap without the, without these vote, well, without a vote to cover the stabilized, I mean, the- I mean, the sewer deficit.
Okay, Counselor Sullivan?
So I, I guess the point of order, could the mayor come back now with the, uh, with the new proposal for the 927 or whatever? Sure.
Yes. Well, I can't really ask him that. Uh, Counselor McGrath Smith?
Just trying to understand the process here. So, um, because we unanimously agreed to the first act, does that mean also that the next step is just to pass all of that on to the rate pair?
Counselor, or?
That's what happens if we don't do anything differently at this point.
If nothing else, if nothing else happens, if there's no other votes, it's my understanding, yes, that gets passed on to the rate pair and our auditor is agreeing.
I believe we have to pass one in order to do that.
Sure, tonight, yeah. I mean, that would be accurate.
And I don't see how we can vote on tax classification because we don't know what we're going to have actual residential and commercial rates in front of us.
Right, but I'm, I'm, what I'm hearing from the auditor is that we can vote on the shift without having the deficit balanced. It just means that the numbers will change?
Depending on the vote or if there's not a vote, the number will change on the recap form depending on how everything goes. But you can, you can vote on the shift. You're just voting on the shift. You're not voting on the absolute number. So if you wanted to know what your tax bill was going to be, it would be like for right now, the assessor gave you what it would be at, um, with the deficit being covered by the stabilization fund. But that would be totally up to city council.
Yeah.
You would want to take that on or not.
I just wanted to make sure we all knew all the options. I'm, I'm just running the meeting. I'm, it's the will of the body, but-
I'm assuming the assessor isn't around. I, I mean, I'd like to talk to Debbie.
She's not today.
Yeah, to, to ask her, eh, you know, I mean, we're here tomorrow, but, um, you know, we could always take this up tomorrow and see where we're at with everybody. But my understanding is until the budget's balanced, you're not supposed to approve the tax rates.
Well, we're, we're, but what I'm just trying to clarify is you're not a- actually approving the tax rate. It's the shift that you would be voting on. So the, the, the num- the value would change based on whether or not we cover the deficit with general stabilization or if it goes on to the taxpayers. We can do this all tomorrow. I'm just-
Right.
Trying to be efficient if, you know?
I'm not sure what the implications are of, of voting just, I've never seen that before. So that would be totally unique. I've never had a scenario where I'm voting on rates, but I don't really know what the rates are. It's just the MRF. And so I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that until I-
Okay.
-get any answer to that. I'll ask, you know, I'll try and get ahold of Debbie tomorrow and see, you know, where we're at with it. So I guess I would just-
All right, I have Counselor Jenny Rivera and I see Counselor Devine's hand up.
I just don't understand. If we have department heads, that's what they're getting paid to do their jobs. Tanya is here. She just said yes. Why don't we listen to the department head and she said yes. Let's go on and do what she recommends.
Counselor Devine?
Yeah, I just would like to propose that we go back to item two and take a vote again. How often do we have the opportunity to transfer something that's strictly interest? It's not somebody's taxes. It's interest. So I think at least let's try to, um, vote on it again and maybe we can get that one person that sees that this is only interest. It's item two. It's not item three and it's not in item four. If I have a second. Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made and- Okay, motion's been made and seconded to reconsider our vote on item number two. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Can I see, I, can I just see a show of hands?
No.
No, okay, forget it. All right.
I can hear it.
Okay, all right, so-
I'd like to make a motion to table the tax rate till tomorrow and hope that the mayor comes in with the sewer deficit proposal.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table the, which items? Two?
Three and four.
And, well, and four.
And four.
Yeah, three and four, yep.
Uh, so motion's been made and seconded to table items two, three, and four until tomorrow's-
Well, two, two's already done.
Oh, sorry.
All right, sorry.
Just three and four.
My mistake.
Okay, three and four.
Correct my motion to three and four.
Um, till tomorrow's meeting and-
On the motion?
A roll call vote, please.
Uh, yeah, sure. Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Gibner?
No.
Graney? Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
No.
Murphy Ramboletti? I don't care. Yes. Ocasio?
No.
Uh, Israel Rivera?
See.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Uh, Sullivan?
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, ayes, six nays. So-
It's tabled.
Pick it up tomorrow.
Motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.